I'd like to call this public meeting order. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we're speaking, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for servicemen and women throughout the world, for those who have passed away in our community, especially Mr. Bob Reed, husband of former city clerk Lori Reed, a gentleman in every sense of the word who would do anything for anyone, he'd give you the shirt off of his back. He is going to be greatly missed and we pray for him and his family at this difficult time. And also for Mr. Rocco Damiano, he was a retired former DPW director, and again, may we keep both of them and their families in our thoughts and prayers during this time. Real call, please.
Mr. McCandry?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Downey?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, correspondence received from Office of Economic and Community Development dated September 27, 2021 regarding customer balance detail for all transactions. 3B, correspondence received from Office of Economic and Community Development dated September 27, 2021 regarding customer balance summary for all transactions. 3C, correspondence from Eileen Cipriani, Executive Director, Office of Economic and Community Development dated September 28, 2021, responding to council questions regarding revolving loan funds. 3D, correspondence received from administration regarding public safety building at Serenti Center, project overview and cost to date. 3E, City of Scranton-Lacawanna Regional Stormwater Program feasibility study and final report from HRG, Inc.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? I have one comment, I just want to thank the OECD Director for her quick responses to some of our questions and the backup detail that we put in third order. Anyone else?
I have two things.
Oh, I'm sorry. If not received and filed, any council members have any announcements?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, that's okay.
I do. I would also like to offer my condolences and deepest sympathy to Lori Reed and her family. Very sad news this week. Secondly, I received from Senator Marty Flynn, it's attention all high school seniors in the 22nd District. They can join Senator Marty Flynn's Student Ambassador Program. You represent your school, you learn about state government, it's a fun experience. I know that we have a student ambassador program at our school. It develops great leadership skills, it looks great on a resume and a college application. So, you can apply at senatormartiflynn.com by October 8th. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would also like to express my condolences to Lori Reed, her daughter Amy, and the rest of the family.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next Monday, October 11th is Columbus Day and City Hall will be closed. The DPW is also off on this day. Refuge and Red Recycling Containers will be a day behind next week. Mr. Waldenberg?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Thank you. The first speaker tonight is Joan Hodewannitz.
First thing I want to mention is that the Albright Memorial Library, in conjunction with the American Red Cross, is going to sponsor a blood drive on Monday, October 18th, at the Albright Memorial Library at 500 Vine Street, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Now, appointments are required, so if you wish to donate, and I suggest that if you can, you do, you can make an appointment in one of three ways. You can either log on to redcrossblood.org and enter SPL, Scranton Public Library, as a sponsor code. You can call the Red Cross at 1-800-RED-CROSS, that's 1-800-733-2767. Or you can contact Jessica Serenti at the library. Her email is jserenti, J-S-E-R-R-E-N-T-I, at albright.org. Or call her at 570-348-3000, extension 3023. I called the Red Cross and apparently, you do not have to have a COVID vaccination to donate, just as long as you're in good health. And you will receive, among other things, a Halloween T-shirt while supplies last. You could also check out a book, check out a movie, check out a music CD, or anything else you want to do in the library. Please keep in mind that this pandemic has not been kind to the Red Cross and its blood supplies. So if possible, and you have the time and the desire, consider donating on October 18th. Can you give us an update on the status of the city's audit?
We're hoping to receive something within the next few weeks.
Okay. And I will update you on the labor agreements for the firefighters on the city's website. There's been no change since last week, so there's still some gaps. I did see in your backup, the summary of the investments made into the Serenti Center. I counted $6,600, $606,000, I'm sorry, $606,978 already paid and recovered by grants. There's a $251,000 bid to be put out. So, we're looking at something like $857,978 investment in that center. All but about 10% has been covered by grants. My question really is, next, now that we have an idea of how much money we had to invest, do we have a timeline on its completion?
We don't have a timeline yet, but we have invited the Chief of Police in and others from the administration, and I expect that that will happen within the next few weeks to get even more of a deep dive.
Okay, that's good. Also, do you know if it's the Knowles Insurance List for city property has been updated to reflect that building as we put more and more money into it, that it's been insured appropriately?
I don't know that, but we can have Mr. Waldenberg.
That'll be coming up, I think, in the spring for renewal, the contract. Let's see, and I went through the stormwater study, that's going to take a few readings because it's a very complicated and detailed document. My only question tonight is, what's the next step? Is the administration trying to address this issue with the county? Are there any talks going on? Do you know what's going on?
Yeah, they're trying to initiate conversations between the county and other municipalities in our area.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to see this put on the back burner, because I think we're already late in the time scheme of getting this thing off the ground. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Tom Coyne.
Last week, I asked for an answer in fifth order to the memorandum provided by Solicitor Hayes on the Home Rule Charter, and it was not addressed. Today, I ask you each to respond. The Home Rule Charter makes it clear that there are two paths. City Council can at any time by ordinance start the process, or the citizens, by way of petition, requiring 5% of the gubernatorial vote in the last Scranton election can start it. Council, I ask you, will you support and introduce an ordinance to put the question to the citizens on the ballot? Yes or no?
I'll start off by answering no, and I can give you a reason why if you'd like now. I like this form of government. I've been the councilman now, as you know, for eight years. I think the strong mayor form of government works in the strong mayor form and council form of government that we have here. So I would not support that. There was a study commissioned in the late 90s, went through that whole process, and I would not like to see a council manager form of government. I don't like how those work, so I am in favor of what we have now. Does there need to be updates to the Home Rule Charter in terms of language and that? Yeah, probably, but in terms of a whole commission, I don't think it's necessary, and I wouldn't support changing the form of government.
No, for the same reasons.
I'd also say no for the same reasons.
I'll say no for the same reasons. I do agree with Mr. Gahn, as we can tweak it in some format, and I would like to also wait. We discussed in caucus about the reclassification of the city, how would that affect it? I'm not sure, so I'm going to wait for that information.
At the same, I am interested in updating the Home Rule Charter, not necessarily changing the form of government, but seeing what changes we need to make, and I thought the best way to do that was through a commission and being able to really look at it in depth. So, that's where I stand on it.
Thank you. Part of impaneling the commission is the putting through an ordinance or forcing the citizens to do it. It does not necessarily mean that we are throwing out the entire charter. The commission is designed to look, review, edit, and give suggestions for the change. But if we do not do this, there is no way to change the Home Rule Charter except for directly looking at it, and it's the citizens' responsibility, and it's the citizens' rights that hopefully the ones who have come forward will step forward and request for those changes. There are a number of difficulties inside of the Home Rule Charter that were not foreseen back in 1973 and were not foreseen in the 90s. The world has changed drastically. And though it may be a comfortable city charter, there are some blaring difficulties in it, including how powers and how corruption in this government was let to go on because of the way of the interpretation of that Home Rule Charter. And that needs to be addressed, and it cannot be addressed by pushing it down the road and saying, "I'm not comfortable because I'm comfortable the way things are." That's my concern, and that's why I brought that forward, is I do believe there should be a review of it, and there has to be a pathway to start it. And I don't see any pathway unless either the citizens or council in representing a pathway of change actually step forward, take that helm, and go, "We need a body to review it." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Norma Jeffries.
Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And tonight, I wanted to start off by congratulating Jeff, he's not here tonight, on this great article that he had in the paper about the, you know, where they're doing this construction on City Hall and the tower. And it was a great article, and it answered a lot of my questions, and it saved me from asking you, Council, what is the status of that? So when I read this, I thought, "Oh, great, there's a question I don't have to ask, Council." But as I come down Mulberry Street, and anyone that comes down Mulberry Street, that's the first thing you see as you're coming down. So it was so good to see that, this article, that they're going to start to work on it. But it was like $200,000, I think, that's being invested right now to start the work on the far-right tower because of the leakage and everything. So as I read the article, there's so much more money that's needed to do the complete work. There are grants that are out there, and I know we have grant writers here for the city of Scranton, so I'm just hoping that the grants are granted and that we do get the money that we need. It also talked about the capital budget, that there's going to be money in the capital budget as well to try to get this project going, so it just doesn't stop with just the one tower being fixed. So I'm just hoping that going forward, you know, the next time I speak about this, I can say thank you to everyone that had something to do with getting that tower and getting it to look the best that it can be. As you come into City Hall, yes, you see that wonderful work that they did there, but nobody can see that unless you're coming to City Hall. So it's going to be a wonderful showcase when it is completed. The second thing I wanted to talk about, and I had spoken about this before, was emergency billing, surprise billing once you go to the emergency room. And when you go there, you never know what you're going to get, what kind of bill you're going to get, who you're going to get it from. But it was so good to read in the paper again that that practice of surprise billing is going to be non-existent. Come January 2022, it has been signed into practice, that that'll go away. So I did send a note to Kyle Mullins, because I wanted his take, because I know there's a bill down in Harrisburg, and I'm sure he's going to address it for us, as well as Matt Cartwright, you know, to let them know that I did see this in the paper, and I just wanted to let others out there know that there should not be any more surprise billing as we go forward. And then my third thing that I have on my list, as a regular attendee at City Council, and as a public can see, there's just so few of us here in the council chambers, and I just want to give a shout out to ECTV for recording these sessions each week and for putting them up on YouTube. For, in a timely matter, because of these recordings, we get a chance to listen to council members from the comfort of our homes. As I thought about City Council, we elected you, City Council, to represent us, to represent the city of Scranton, to the residents of Scranton. But also, we do have a voice, and we do, and I think that our voice needs to be heard. So as I come, everybody's not comfortable or cannot come to City Council and speak, but they can write to you, they can send emails, they can call City Council when there's things that they may not agree with. And the only way that we're going to get things changed is to have open dialogue between the public and City Council. So I appreciate the fact that we voted for you, we stood at the voting polls, and we pulled that lever. So now that you're sitting there, you know, the public has to also have a say in what goes on. So I say all that to thank you, ECTV, for the wonderful job that they do, and to thank Council for the jobs that you do, but also to give us a voice in what we want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night. Next speaker is Richard Larito.
Richard Larito, South Webster Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. I have several things I'd like to bring up tonight. I did contact the mayor's office. It's been years and years and years by my residents. The situation on Stafford Avenue there, close to where that old Sunoco gas station closed down years ago when the highway reconfiguration happened, there's like a 25 to 50 yard stretch of that road that has been in tremendous disrepair for, like, ages. I did contact the mayor's office about it. Nothing's been done yet. You know, I know things take time, but if there's any way you could get involved in that, I mean, just really, it needs just to be, that section just needs to be sliced out, and, you know, 25 to 50 yards of new pavement put in. It is a high-traffic area with people going to the post office, getting off 81, accessing South Scranton. It really is a shame to see the road, and, you know, it's sticking 10 pounds of patch in a pothole. It's just making the whole situation worse. Also, I don't know if you can have any effect on this, but I noticed like, to the right-hand side of the Radisson Hotel, now, I don't know who owns that property, but it's a descending wall that goes over toward, what would it be, Bill, which avenue would that be there? Cedar Avenue?
Cedar Avenue, yes.
Yeah, and it's falling at the disrepair. I think that, I don't know if the Radisson is actually the owner of that, I mean, it extends for like 100 yards maybe, but I see a real opportunity to beautify the city by refacing that wall and maybe even like a Steamtown mural with the big boy on it, something to that effect. I think it would really add a lot to the city. Right now, it's really becoming an eyesore. It's really deteriorating. And back to the old thing that's been being hashed out in the editorials in the newspaper, everybody's writing for all the different reasons that are popping up, whatever they can try to create a new angle why, you know, we're going to fight this, the renaming of Biden Street and the Central Scranton Expressway to Joseph R. Biden's Expressway. You know, they're telling stories about why we shouldn't do it, but they're really not being honest with us. The bottom line is, they are all Donald J. Trump lovers. I wish they would at least state that in their letters, because 99% of those editorials, I feel, are just people who are bitter about the fact that they lost the election. Probably a good percentage of them don't even believe that they did lose the election. It's just a fact that the election was won by Joseph Biden. And I just, I mean, when Donald Trump, the way I look at it, when Donald Trump stepped into office, he stepped into the best scenario that any president has stepped into office in over a century. When Joe Biden stepped in on inauguration day, he probably stepped into the worst conditions of any president in the last 100 years. And a lot of that was due to the devastation that Donald Trump wrought on this country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg, can you send something to Mr. Parambo to have him look into the repaving of that section of Stafford Avenue?
I will, Mr. Gahn.
Also, if you can check with Senator Flynn's office, when Senator Blake was in office, I know that he was pushing for the rehabilitation of that side of the Radisson there, which is in deplorable condition, as Mr. Larito stated, and I think they were going for a grant. I don't know if they got it or what happened there, but if you can check with Senator Flynn's office on that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bob Bowles.
I'm here, and many other people are opposed to renaming Spruce Street and the Central Scranton Expressway after Biden for a lot of reasons that I'm here to discuss. For one, it isn't representative of what the people want. Biden's approval rating is sitting around 40-some percent. Might be what Mr. Gahan and the four yes-men on council and Paige Cognetti want, but it's not what everyone else wants. Joe Biden is responsible for the deaths of innocent men, women, and seven trillion children in a drone attack in Afghanistan, which he lied about. He is also responsible for the deaths of 13 of our fellow servicemen and women during his botching and the withdrawal of our troops from Afghanistan. He has blood on his hands, and so does everyone here who supported the renaming of the expressway and Spruce Street. Iconic streets after him was done for the people and by the people of the city. Joe Biden is unfit for office, and renaming our two streets is an absurdity. I'm renewing my request for Mr. Gahan to resign from council. I believe, and most of us do believe, that we are now running a liberal social dictatorship here in the city of Scranton. And one question he simply hides behind the Home Rule Charter. Let me explain. The Home Rule Charter is subject to the U.S. Constitution, the PA Constitution, and the Sunshine Act, all three of which Gahan has publicly violated during his tenure here on council. My previous request for his resignation was ignored, and I was denied my rights as a citizen to due process after both the federal and state constitutions, and that will be decided by the courts where we presently are on this matter. However, I'm taking a moment to renew my request for you to resign due to the abuse of the Home Rule Charter and violations of statutes to which the charter is subordinate, in hopes that you do the right thing and you do resign. The way I look at it, Mr. Gahan, and our four cronies here that are helping you and Cognetti have taken away the voice of the people. Renaming streets after President, so to speak, Biden should have been a referendum. The average voter isn't versed in the finer points of politics and public meetings and is unable to voice their opinions. Council and the mayor know this, and by hiding behind the Home Rule Charter, they silence the people they supposedly represent. It's not here to hear the voice of the people. Aside from Biden's abysmal approval rating, 77% Americans disapprove the way he handled the withdrawal of our troops from Afghanistan. Further, you can tune into any NFL game this season and hear crowds of 100,000 spectators chanting "F Joe Biden." Now you have to use your imagination to decipher what the "F" means, but I could tell you, it doesn't mean friend or fabulous or anything positive at all. The people of Scranton don't have to stand for being silenced and having their rights trampled by a corrupt few. I filed an injunction to stop the city from renaming Spruce Street and the Central Scranton Expressway, and the judge assigned, the Honorable Julia Monley, granted a hearing on October 29th. I feel it was done on purpose so that the hearings would fall after measures were well underway to change street signs. I feel my voice and the voice of the people of this disgraced city matter, and granting a hearing after these measures are underway is a built-in way to dismiss my challenge. I'm asking the Honorable Judge Monley to resign from the matter for an obvious conflict of interest. The fact of the matter is that this is disruptive change and it negatively impacts the people of Scranton. So put a sign on your buildings, people, stating that the correct address is Spruce Street. The U.S. Postal Office will know, Spruce, FedEx will know, and so will everyone else, including GPS will know where Spruce Street is. Joe Biden is not a Scrantonian, he is a Delawarean, has spent enough of his formative years in Scranton to learn and master the art of corruption. Your voice counts, don't let them silenced by the mayor, Mr. Gahan, and his four cronies who blindly agree with whatever he says. There should be a referendum, this is a government for the people and by the people, not a liberal socialist dictatorship. Good evening.
Would anyone else like to address council?
I'm not.
No.
I'm asking for a word of our rules of law.
No.
Our rules don't.
You had an opportunity to speak during a fourth order.
Would anyone else like to address council?
None.
Okay. Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Councilman Schuster, any motions or comments?
I have two things tonight. Last week, I brought up the issue of Bellevue. All this week, I got several pictures of tractor-trailers over the weight limit, driving on Railroad Avenue. Mr. Waldenberg, have we had any updates on the Bellevue section of the city?
Not of today, Mr. Schuster.
All right, maybe we could reach out and see if there's anything being done after any updates. Mr. Waldenberg, have we had any updates on the Bellevue section of the city?
None of today, Mr. Schuster.
All right, maybe we could reach out and see if there was, if there's anything being done, if there are any updates. Also, we spoke about in caucus, I brought up last week, and the line item for the community centers, for Tri-Park Community Center in Kaiser Valley, Mr. Waldenberg did reach out, and I don't think we've received any correspondence, correct?
No, we haven't.
All right, so in caucus, we did talk about counsel sending a letter. I think everybody here was in agreement, so we'll work on getting that out to the administration. Other than that, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. Councilman McAndrew, any motions or comments tonight?
I have a couple. So I would like to piggyback on Mr. Schuster regarding the Bellevue situation with the large trucks. I do know now that everybody's aware, which is great, some enforcement is occurring, which I'm glad to hear. I also received a bunch of pictures, so, but what I also received today was some correspondence from Fay Frannis, and what she's saying is, I want you to look into this, Mr. Waldenberg, is that Officer Guy, I think I'm pronouncing his name correctly, is the only certified officer to use the weight scale for trucks, and no one else is certified, and that the city is aware of this, and in order to get someone else certified, because there's no one else certified in the ranks, that it's going to take at least a couple months, and Officer Guy is supposedly retiring in three weeks. So could you inquire to see what the plan is for that, so they can continue to enforce, you know, the ordinance now that was written just for Bellevue with regard to these trucks?
I will, sir.
And, you know, something else, someone else mentioned to me, and I don't know, so this is why I'm asking, if there's no one certified in the city to use the weight scales, I don't know if this crosses boundaries or because of CBAs, but the Sheriff's Department, because it is the county, do they, I mean, they have maybe that expertise for an interim until someone else gets certified? So I'm just throwing a couple of things out there, please, you know, just inquire for me, and I'd be happy with that. Secondly, Solicitor Hayes, a few months, I don't know if it was August or early September, late August, you reached out to Mr. Pochus regarding an explanation of the St. Anne Street traffic study.
That's correct.
He never responded, right?
Did not respond.
Could you please send that correspondence again?
Sure.
I know we're anticipating having department heads come in, but this was a rest before that, so I'd like to get an answer, please.
Will do.
And then, thirdly, so a couple of weeks ago, I brought up the NRS settlement, divorce, The only information I got was none the first week. The second week, I asked again for, you know, the amount of payments made to the city to NRS, whether any agreement has been entered, if there's no agreement has been entered with NRS or its successor, the anticipated date that the city will terminate its relationship. So what I did get back, the only department that responded, because then I doubled down the week later and asked for vouchers of payment, so, and I want to thank the Controller's Office for their immediate response. No one else responded, from the Law Department, from administration, but the Controller's Office did respond and said there was total payments under Elite Revenue Solutions, which they changed their name from NRS because of their involvement and with the pay-to-play part, so they changed their name to sound a little better, to Elite Revenue. So what I received from the Controller's Office is, on July, there were several payments that totaled $159,675.78. And then prior to that, Elite got $12,368.72. So prior to this, we had discussion that, you know, we weren't in agreement of paying them because they, we, well, I believe and I think my colleagues believe that they violated or breached their contract. So we didn't feel they were entitled to any money. So if they're being paid, now I finally find out they're being paid, is there a deal made? It sounds like that there is a deal, or, so could you please double, you know, please circle around again?
Yes.
Ask the prior questions, you know, I inquired about, so I can get some clarity on this, because are they going to continue to get paid instead of one lump sum like they wanted? Are they going to piecemeal it out like they're doing now? And is there agreement, yes or no?
A follow-up.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
And I have one more thing. So with the pickup and the drop-offs of schools, I know in the past that the police department helped us out with regards to schools. I got one complaint from Willard, and I know it's a nightmare because it's in my neighborhood with pickup and drop-off, and Garrity's right next door. So one person inquired that, could they set it up like Western intermediate for pickup and drop-off, utilize it as a one-way? All right, so that's for Willard. If, you can just inquire about it, I don't know if it's, you know, if it's, can happen, or more, at least, police participation during them times. And then I also got a previous email, and I apologize, I saw it maybe on the 9th, I just saw it again, and it didn't really circle on any elementary schools, but the same concern was, you know, can the elementary schools have during pickup and drop-off more police presence? So it'd be a better, a better situation for the elementary school. So, you know, combine them, inquire to the police department, and see, you know, what kind of answers we can get from them.
I will, sir.
That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, do any, do you have any motions or comments tonight?
Yes, I do. I just had received a response this week from the Scranton Police Department that they are looking into alternate names for the Civil Disturbance Unit, so I will keep the public updated on that. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was Birch Street, which we've talked about a lot in the past, I think over the past two years that they've been working on that street, that was American Water doing that, that work, and it was supposed to be fully restored back in the springtime, and residents were still left with some pretty large bumps in the road, making it a little difficult to drive down that street. So I have been in contact with American Water to see if we can get that resolved, and last week, they were out there taking measurements, they stated that they need to pave and grind down the concrete tops, and then manufacture lid modifications and weld them to the existing frame to cut down on the noise of the, like, the metal grates in that section of road. And so they did start some of that, some of that work, so if anyone is driving down and wondering why they're working on it still, that's the reason to help correct the road and fully restore it. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments?
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Just a few items from last week that residents had asked about. The Controller's report from August of 2021, there was a question about the non-departmental expenditure line item totaling $367,994.04. The finance manager from the BA's office advised Mr. Waldenberg that this is a debt service, the debt service amounts comprised of the AMAS refinance payment and the lease payment that is paid each year. The Fall 2021 paving list, just an update on that, the bids are out, and the DPW will provide the paving list once the bids are finalized. I was also questioned about the overtime for the Licensing and Inspections Code Enforcement Office. We, counsel was advised that in 2020, the Licensing and Inspections overtime budget was $2,500. In 2021, it was cut to $500. To date, Licensing and Inspections has spent $1,945.29 in overtime. The staff works Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:30 p.m. If the inspectors are called out for a fire, a gas leak, building collapse, outside of those hours, the staff is entitled to overtime. I think Ms. Hodawanet's asked about Rainey and Rainey, so we did inquire with the BA's Office, as we have previously, and the finance manager responded that many municipalities have audit prep firms to assist with the yearly audit process. Paying Rainey and Rainey less than $10,000 for their assistance is more beneficial to the city than hiring another full-time accountant at a minimum salary of $45,000 a year plus benefits to focus exclusively on audit preparation. Also, last week, someone asked about the signal at Lackawanna and Wyoming Avenue, and that they, so we reached out to the traffic department, and they are looking at that and whether or not there can be better pedestrian walk, like, a walkway, green light synchronization. And I believe that was it. Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg?
5B for introduction, an ordinance setting forth its intent to provide funds to repay in full its outstanding federally taxable general obligation note, series of 2018, providing when this ordinance shall become effective, authorizing and directing the preparation, execution, and delivery of all other documents and the taking of all other required action by specified officers of the city, providing for severability of provisions, providing for the repealing of all ordinances or parts of ordinances insofar as the same shall be inconsistent herewith.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. On the question, the Webster note was utilized to contribute towards the city's pension fund using proceeds received from the sale of assets by the Scranton Sew Authority to Pennsylvania American Water while litigation challenging this transfer was pending. The matter has now been concluded, allowing for the repayment of the note. The city's overall debt will be decreased and annual interest payments will cease. I did email Larry West, the business administrator, late this afternoon. In the backup, it states that the city will utilize a combination of funds budgeted for the Webster note and dedicate it millage for debt service. The total cost will be available on October 1st, at which time an update will be provided to counsel. We have not received that update yet, so we expect to receive that before final passage. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution supporting passage of Pennsylvania House Bill 1393, which decriminalizes possession of fentanyl test strips for personal use.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the Council Number 86, 2021, an ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the southerly side of Birch Street, State Route 3023, beginning approximately 80 feet west of its intersection with Cedar Avenue for a distance of 95 feet, to allow for safe-site distance for a proposed driveway for the Dollar General store being constructed and located at 800 Cedar Avenue.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file of the Council Number 85, 2021, creating and establishing special city account number, as noted, entitled Public Health Coordination for the receipt of and dispersment of grant monies from the Moses Taylor Foundation for payment of the new public health coordinator position for the city of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, Resolution Number 224, 2021, appointment of Barbara O'Malley, 638 Wheeler Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority, effective September 13, 2021. Ms. O'Malley will be replacing Timothy Woody, who resigned August 15, 2021. Ms. O'Malley will fill the unexpected, unexpired term of Mr. Woody, which is scheduled to expire August 22, 2023.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, as I said last week, I'd like to welcome Ms. O'Malley and thank Mr. Woody for his time with the city.
I would like to echo those comments. As I've said in the past, the Recreation Authority, including Mr. Woody, who is now departing, has done a phenomenal job at Naught Park, giving their own time and their own efforts to improve the park, so I want to thank them and wish them all the best of luck. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, nothing at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned, have a nice night, thank you.